Again, thank you all for attending this Caldwell City Council Candidate Forum. I would like to thank the sponsor of the forum, the Caldwell Chamber of Commerce. I'd also, the Chamber has sponsored such events in the past for many years. This is a way to help the community be informed on issues affecting both the city and beyond. The format for tonight's forum, which was determined by the Caldwell Chamber of Commerce's Government Affairs Committee, is as follows. Each participant will be given two minutes to state why the candidate believes they are qualified to serve on the city council. I will then present questions for the candidates to answer, alternating the order in which each candidate answers the questions. The questions were developed by the Caldwell Chamber of Commerce's Government Affairs Committee. All questions have been communicated to the candidates before tonight's debate so that candidates have an opportunity to fully develop their thoughts before presenting them. Candidates will have two minutes for their answers. At the end, each candidate will be given two minutes for closing remarks. There will not be any questions from the audience. After the formal portion of the debate at 8:30 PM, please retire to the lobby to ask specific questions to individual candidates. In full disclosure, John McGee is a former student of the College of Idaho and a former student of mine and is also a former member of the college's Board of Trustees. Evangeline, I knew I was gonna mess that up. Beechler is married to a former student of the College of Idaho and a former student of mine. I have not had any communications with either of these candidates or any of the candidates in the time leading up to this forum. Each candidate at this forum has been treated exactly the same regardless of the relationship they have to the college or myself. Now, we could start. Each candidate have their two-minute introduction. We'll start down here. Mr. Trakel.
Hello, everybody. My name's Chris Trakel and as you know, I'm running for city council seat number four. Oh, I'm sorry. Alright, is that better? Alright. I'm excited to be here tonight and first of all, I would like to thank the city of Caldwell's Chamber of Commerce and the College of Idaho for putting this on and hosting this event for us tonight. I also want to say thank you to every one of you for coming here and attending and be interested in what we're talking. My wife and I were born and raised here in the Treasure Valley. We went to school here, we graduated here, we spent a lot of our lives here, basically almost all of it, till I joined the Marine Corps and ripped her away and brought her with me. So, in 2001, I joined the Marine Corps, honorably served my country. 2016, I was honorably discharged and we came back to Idaho as a promise to my wife that we would do such a thing. We fell in love with Caldwell looking around for homes and we decided to purchase a home here in Caldwell amazed at the growth that it had become. And so, we decided to raise our children in this beautiful city and give them the same opportunity that we had when we were young to enjoy everything that Idaho has to offer. Now, over the years, I noticed my taxes started to rise as I lived and I've only been in this community for three years since I retired. And so, I began to do my research and as I did my research, I discovered that we were paying up to 35% more than Boise pays in their tax rates. While talking with my neighbors and other fellow communities, people, I was hearing their current frustration with Caldwell, the current policy going on, they're not being heard, they don't feel they're being properly represented. I thought about this in great length, listening to them, listening to their frustrations, and finally, I realized that with my experience that I got from the Marine Corps, what I learned in leadership, discipline, sacrifice, devotion, that I could probably make a good leader and I knew I would make a good leader for the city of Caldwell. Apologize. For the city of Caldwell. So, I know the issues and the challenges our committee, our community encounters trying to get their voices and concerns heard. I understand their frustration, which reflect inadequate representation in the problem resolution process which directly impacts the residents of Caldwell. I listen to and I hear the concerns and issues of the residents of the community and I shall make a difference. I want to have the opportunity in the city of Caldwell to be your voice in the resolution process. I will work for a better communication and transparency with the Caldwell governing body and most importantly, I will serve and represent the residents of the city of Caldwell.
Thank you. Mr. Wagner.
Thank you and thank you, yes, to everybody that is here tonight. Appreciate you taking the time out of your Tuesday evening, missing the World Series at the moment, to be here with us tonight.
It's two to one, right?
Yes, I know, it is.
Who's winning?
So, I'm excited to be here. I'm excited for this opportunity to run for city council and to represent each and every one of you. A lot of people have asked me why I am doing this, why am I doing that? So, I have worked for the city of Caldwell for the past six and a half years and I have thoroughly enjoyed that. There's been tremendous growth through that time. I believe we've made some incredible changes that have just changed the community that we're in, improving it, making it a better place to live, work, and play. My time as a city employee is coming to an end and so, as I sat and talked with my wife and my family, what can we do to continue to improve this city that we live in? And then, this opportunity came up and we jumped at it. Gives us the opportunity to stay involved and to continue to make Caldwell a great place to live, to work, and to raise a family. I grew up in Caldwell. I graduated from Caldwell High School and I moved back here with my wife almost 15 years ago and are raising our family here and it's, Caldwell is, has a big piece of my heart and it's just amazing to see the growth that's occurred from when I moved here in 1990 to where we are today. It's, it's a different community, but it still is Caldwell, which is a wonderful place to raise your family. The secret is out, people know about Caldwell and I plan on continuing to be a part of that, making it a great place for all of us to continue to live, work, and to raise our families.
Thank you. Mr. Allgood.
Hello, my name's Chris Allgood. I am an incumbent. I just, I'm finishing my first four years in office. Like the rest of these guys, I grew up here, I attended Jim State Academy. And most of my life until I became a police officer, I did farm work. That's pretty much what I grew up doing here in the valley. In 1985, I started with the Caldwell Police Department and I spent the next 30 years there. I retired then to 2015 and that was a wonderful experience. I started with the city council in 2016 and I have to say, I'm very proud of what's happened in this city. I, I, I love this town, I've raised a family in this town and there's, there's very little I'd change about what we've done in the recent past. I, I'm very proud of what's happened. I feel blessed, I feel honored to be able to serve this community and, and live here and raise my kids and do all those things in such a great place and so, with your blessing, I will continue to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Beechler.
Hi, everyone. Let's see, does this thing come off? Perfect. My name is Evangeline Beechler. I've been a resident of Caldwell for about four years. I've lived in Idaho for 27, went to Corlaine, came to Boise State, stayed, came over to Caldwell when I got married. A little bit about myself, I have two bachelor's degrees. I went to Boise State University, I have one from there and I have one from University of Idaho. But I am Yount fam by marriage, as Jasper said. My wife is an alum. We have a 15-month-old child, you've probably heard him screaming and I'm sure he's gonna make a lot of noise. He enjoys destroying the house and screaming for no apparent reason. For the last 15 years, I've been the clinical supervisor of a behavioral health clinic. I work with children with developmental disabilities and different cognitive impairments. And we work with those kids and their families in the homes and in the community. So, I spent the last 15 years all over the Treasure Valley from, well, Mountain Home to New Plymouth, helping those families and those kids we serve. I've served on many boards in the last few years. I was president of North Boise Little League. Pretty upset about missing game six of the World Series right now, I'm not gonna lie. And I've also was on the, the board for the Idaho Association of Community Providers. In 2015, I was appointed by Governor Otter to the Idaho Behavioral Health Planning Council. That is a group, 51% consumers, 49% state agencies, that evaluated the state of behavioral health, the needs, and then we reported back to the governor's office and we reported back to the state legislature and what we thought were important. And for the last, I don't know, about two years now, I've been serving on the Caldwell Housing Authority. I'm running for the city council because through the nature of my work and my volunteering, I've gained a different perspective on the direct impact of city policies on the people and family in, in our community. And I want to make sure that everybody's voices are elevated and that everybody has an equal voice to the city council. So, I'm running to make sure that not only everyone can live, work, and play, but people can thrive and their families can stay here and thrive. So, thank you.
Mr. McGee.
Thank you. Thanks Jasper and thank you to the College of Idaho and the Idaho Press Tribune and the Caldwell Chamber. Thank you for bringing this event on. I'm excited to be here tonight and I'm excited to participate in this opportunity to talk about the future of Caldwell. Most of you know, I'm a lifelong resident of this community. I'm a graduate of Valley View High School, I'm a graduate of the College of Idaho, no thanks to Jasper. But I've been here a long, long time and I'm here tonight to talk about the future of Caldwell. But before I do that, I want to introduce my wife and I want to introduce my two children, Hannah and Madeline and Maxwell. Can you raise your hand? Thank you. I think it's appropriate that we're here at the College of Idaho tonight. The college is one of the most important things that we have in this community and it's important that the city of Caldwell and the College of Idaho continues that relationship. As a former student body president of this institution, a former chairman of the board, I've had a lot of involvement at the college. In fact, as a junior and student body president, I helped break ground on this very building many, many years ago. And so, I'm really proud to be here and I'm proud to be an alumni of the College of Idaho. During this campaign, I've had a lot of important people who have stepped up and said, "John, we're supporting you." And for that, I couldn't be more proud. Senator Patty Ann Lodge has endorsed me. Councilman Shannon Ozuna has supported me. And now, Councilman Dennis Carlson has also endorsed me as a candidate for this office. And I think that speaks volumes to the folks that who have sat in these seats. They know what it takes to be a councilman and an effective councilman for the city of Caldwell and they've pledged their support for my candidacy. We've seen good and bad as I've been here for 46 years. There were many years when I was the ages of my two children, Maxwell and Maddie, where there wasn't a whole heck of a lot that was going on in this community. But over the past several years, in the partnership between private individuals and public officials, we've been able, we've been able to grow this community. We have wonderful assets in this community now, such as Indian Creek, the Indian Creek Plaza, College of Idaho Football Program, and this community continues to get better year after year after year. And my pledge to you and the rest of the people of this community, of the Caldwell community is that if I'm elected to the city council, that those types of things will continue.
Thank you. Mr. Stoddick.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chuck Stoddick. I'm the dreadful incumbent tonight. So, I wanted to thank the, the Chamber and the College of Idaho, Go Younts. I wish I would be a part of this program relative to football because I've played football a lot of years, including three years of semi-pro ball and the lack of hair and everything else on me will tell you, I'm probably a little bit too old for this anymore, but I would love to play again. Four years ago, I promised you honesty, responsibility, integrity, and discernment regarding any of the ordinances and resolutions that came across my desk at the city council and I plan on continuing that. My goal this year and the next four years, if, if you choose to elect me, is growing Caldwell with responsibility that benefits all taxpayers, not just a certain group. And I intend to keep that promise for this coming year. A lot of folks around the city hall and some of the employees call me, I'm part of the good old boys department and I want to tell you folks that I'm not. I, I don't rubber stamp things that come across my desk on resolutions and ordinance. I research them as best I can to give, to represent you folks on, on the good decisions. I surround myself with fellow taxpayers, committee members that have served on the planning zoning committee and other committees for the city, also downtown businessmen because I think those folks are kind of the heartbeat of what goes on in the city. And without their input, I can't make good decisions. So, if that's part of being, part of the old good, the old good boys club, then I'm proud of that. Another thing is, when you surround people that have a lot of knowledge on what has happened in the past and what to look for in the future, I just think that gives you a, a better opportunity to make sure that the decisions that you make on behalf of the taxpayers are the right ones, the best ones you can make. As far as my background, I was born and raised in Minnesota, still a diehard Viking fan. I am an Army veteran, I served through 61 through 64 when the Vietnam War started and Mr. TruShiff decided to send some missiles over to Cuba, which we stopped. And I think that experience has helped me a lot too. Helped me grow up. I was just a young kid out of high school and I appreciated that opportunity to serve the country. If you choose to elect me for another four years, I'll guarantee you, I'll do the best job I can for you. Thank you.
Fine, now we're gonna start with our questions. We'll start with Mr. Wagner. I ask you again to try to be concise and try to stick to the two minutes. Our first question, how might the city of, how might the city government help improve the business environment in Caldwell? And Mr. Wagner, two minutes, please.
Thank you. This is quite the question and I wish I had 20 minutes, two minutes, we don't want to bore you too much, we'll go right to it. The business environment in Caldwell, breaking into two different areas, I would say there's a commercial environment and there's an industrial environment. Those are two very distinct and different types of businesses, but both very vital and important to the community that we live in. Commercial environment, we need to continue to promote downtown Caldwell. We've spent a great amount of money on the Plaza Downtown and for good reason. And we need to continue to improve that, continue to work on that. I believe that we need to have city leaders work more closely with Destination Caldwell, with the Indian Creek Plaza people, so we can continue to grow those businesses down there. I'm one of those businesses. I'm a small business owner on the Plaza and so, I have a vested interest in that and I want to see it to continue to grow and to turn into what it has the potential to do so, but we gotta continue focusing on that. Industrial environment, we need to continue doing what we're doing from an industrial perspective. The industrial environment is so critical to Caldwell. There's been a lot of talk about taxes and our taxes are too high and I agree, my taxes are very high. But the way that we can change that is by our tax base. That's the thing that's hurt Caldwell in the past and so, our industrial environment is whether it's gonna increase that tax base. They pay significantly higher amounts of tax dollars by using a lot less than residential or other types of development. We have seen an increase of, of 850 jobs out in the Sky Ranch Industrial Park area. I have those numbers here, I apologize, I don't have them right now, but hundreds of millions of dollars invested in that area in the last two or three years. Like I said, 800-plus jobs have been created, so those are the kinds of things that we need to focus on. And that's what's gonna change everything for the better in regards to taxes for Caldwell. Focusing on that industrial, growing that, and a lot of times, people are like, "Well, I don't want that on my backyard." But that's what helps grow our community and helps to drive those things. So, those are things that I believe that we need to continue to work on from a business perspective for the city of Caldwell.
Thank you. And Mr. Allgood.
Thank you. Caldwell City has done a lot of really good things to bring business to its community and we're seeing the results of that in a lot of different areas. One of the things that happens is, and Mr. Wagner could probably speak to this more effectively than I could, but the red carpet team, when, when someone comes to town, wants to do a development, wants to start a business, they don't have to go from place to place to place and look, get all the different opinions of all the different city's officials. You can come to the city one time, meet with everybody in one spot, get all, all your answers when you leave. Time is money for business and that's one of the best things we've done. The Sky Ranch area, that started out as a value of about $60 million, today it's worth $550 million. The, the jobs, the taxes, the improvements to that area of town have been immense. What, what we're lacking and what needs improvement, and I hear it all the time, is we need more skilled labor in this valley. That's where we're short, we're, we're short in Caldwell, we're short all over the valley. And, and so, working with our educational institutions from, from grade school all the way through college and creating affordable housing where people can come here and live and, and do well and stay in Caldwell, not drive east every morning, those are the challenges, I think, that we face and the things that I've worked on. Thank you.
Ms. Beechler.
Well, I think this is a great question. I think there are several things we can do as a city. One, we need to make sure we're investing in infrastructure. It's a key component in making sure the city runs smoothly. It's the foundation to make sure everything is going. In addition, I think we need to make sure our families are doing well and thriving. Part of that is making sure that the jobs we bring in pay livable wages and provide health insurance because when the families in our communities do well, our businesses do well. When families are having to work multiple jobs just to make ends meet, it takes away their ability to participate in the business community, even if they'd like to, because they're having to make hard choices and their time is taken up. I know some of the families I serve out here in Caldwell specifically, work multiple jobs and they're more concerned about putting food on the plate, transportation, you know, are they gonna be able to pay their bills? And so, downtown Caldwell is the last thing on their mind. They're really worried about, "How am I gonna survive with my kids? I have three kids, I'm working three jobs, who's gonna watch them?" And when we provide businesses that can pay them well and make sure that their families are taken care of, then they can go out and they can play down in Destination Caldwell and eat at grit in a mono, the best food I've ever had in my life, and drink some Flying Egg coffee and go ice skating with their grandparents. So, another thing I think we need to focus on is making sure that we're providing affordable housing options. A lot of times, we've seen it in Boise, we've seen it over in Eagle Meridian, things grow very quickly and we reach this bubble and then soon, everyone's priced out of where they're living. So, we need to make sure that we're providing businesses the opportunity, but we're growing, but we're growing at a rate and we're making smart choices when we're, we're, we're growing that way.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. McGee.
Thank you. I, I agree with a lot of what's been said already. One of, one of the key things as a public servant is the ability to go out and listen. And rather than public servants, city councilmen, state legislators telling people what they ought to do, one of the key things in working with businesses to make it a better business environment in Caldwell is to go out and listen to the people. When we first started Destination Caldwell, I, I and many others went around to business owners and said, "What needs to be part of the Plaza? What needs to be part of development downtown? What do you need in order to make your business more successful?" So, we went out and listened to people. We listened to what they had to say. We listened to their ideas. Not all of their ideas, not everyone's ideas are gonna be great, but you try to find those ideas that are implementable and that work well for the business community. As a board member for the Caldwell Chamber, that's another thing that we did, is we communicated with businesses and then we listened to what they had to say. As a member of the Caldwell City Council, that's, I would take that exact same approach that I took as a legislator and that is listening to the people that you serve, listening to your constituents, and then going back out and trying to implement those, those types of things. Caldwell is a great place to do business. There are improvements that need to be made, there are differences that we can make and if I'm elected to the city council, I will continue to do what I've always done in my public career and that is go out and listen to people and listen to business owners and then implement the right policies.
Thank you, Mr. Stoddick.
I, I agree with most of what's been said also. I do have a, a different take on how city government ought to operate. In my previous life, when I was an executive for the GR Simplot Company in the Food Division, I toured a lot of the United States, Canada, and some international countries also. And to me, the best way of government is city, a city manager type of government. So, that releases a mayor to, to do a lot of the things that these other folks have been talking about relative to getting businesses back into the city, afford them all the benefits that they might have if they opened shop here and, and leave the day-to-day operations up to the city manager. It's got me an experienced city manager, but every small town that I visited when we were looking to build new french fry plants and develop the rock equipment departments, most of all those had city managers and I could see that, that type of government ran a lot smoother, a lot better than the ones that didn't have city managers. So, I would, I would definitely want to promote that. The other thing I'd like to see too, is like to see us improve our, our contracting ability with some of the businesses that come in. I used to negotiate all the potato contracts for the Simplot Company at all the different plants, like I said, in Canada, here in the US and overseas. Some of the items that I see that we are lacking in this particular situation with what we do with businesses is we don't have timelines and dates set that where if you don't do something by this time, then, then the contract is now void and we go on to something else. Typical example of that would be where the old sort, Saratoga Hotel used to be. We had a construction outfit out of Boise that said that they might build a hotel there and a convention center and have plenty of parking, have a restaurant in it. This went on for about almost a year and a half and every time we visited with them, they said, "Well, we're gonna break ground by this fall or we're gonna break ground by this next spring or we're gonna break ground by this, by this late summer." It never happened and when we looked at the contract, our legal folks didn't have any timelines in there. I think we need to really concentrate on that and make sure that we are successful in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Trakel.
Thanks. We need to have an ethical, realistic communications between us and city officials. Also, I'm using the recorder. Alright, so, we need to have an open dialogue between the city officials and the businesses out there. This way, we can be well aware of the concerns and the problems that they are facing and it gives them an opportunity to bring it directly to the people that can affect that change to help them along in that path. We also gotta remember that we have businesses looking to come in and businesses that are already here. Everybody's gonna have their own concerns, no matter the size of that business, whether it be a mom-and-pop shop or a large chain like Bymar that came in. We need to be able to listen and understand each business's different hurdles that they've gotta go through. The city government needs to be aware and understanding of the challenges that these businesses are facing and the only way to do that is with open communication. So, the first thing we have to do is open up communication. We have to make it much easier for these businesses to get in contact with the people they need to, sit down, have discussions, have the meetings, talk about how difficult they are, if, if they need to expand or what they're running into or what is complicated for them. And then, we as a city can help them and to bring in those businesses and help them expand and grow and bring in more job opportunities and bring in more revenue and help with our economy.
Alright.
No, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to think of how to put it. We also need to make sure that we as a city have clear and concise rules and codes for the small businesses and the other businesses coming in to follow. For example, one off the top of my head would be easier coding when it comes to having to increase their square footage of a building, the codes they have to go through, the building codes they have to follow and stuff like that. We want that to be simple, we want it to be easy, we don't want it to be complicated. Another example would be...
Okay, let's, yeah, that's, that's, that's funny. Now, let's move on to our, our second question. This one, "For any planned improvements by the city, how might such upgrades be funded?" We'll start with Mr. Allgood here.
Thank you. Not a complicated question, but it's a long one.
Two minutes.
Alright. The, a lot of what comes in in new development is funded by the developer. When a developer brings a business or a housing development to town, they have to pay for all the infrastructure that goes into that development, along with the roadway adjoining that development. We also charge impact fees for every house built. There is a, a fee that the builder pays that goes to emergency services and parks within the city. The... that the builder pays that goes to emergency services and parks within the city. At the police department, I've used that a time or two to help as we expanded and grew. There's partnerships with the state, with private entities. For instance, when we, when we widened 21st Avenue, the state participated, Unit Pacific participated. There's partnerships that we use. And then taxes and enterprise fees. Our sewer, our water, those are all enterprise fees that pays for growth. I'm very happy to say that all of the growth that we experienced, we've paid for. We have not borrowed money for the growth that we paid for. When we expanded our sewer, which is happening right at the minute, it's paid for. We saved and we planned for that. So growth is, growth is tough in that the needs come before the revenue. It's the cart before the horse kind of situation. The way we resolve that is planning and trying to keep a crystal ball in front of us to see what's coming and try to plan for that kind of thing. I feel like we're doing a good job. There's always hiccups, but the growth is, is comes now so fast, it's, it's very hard to keep up with. It is a concern. It's something that, that we discuss a lot. Thank you.
Mr. Bechler.
Well, I think this is a great question. I know that as I've been talking to, knocking doors and talking to voters at Caldwell, this is definitely the number one thing they bring up. It's infrastructure. I've heard concerns where families are worried about the sidewalks or lack thereof sidewalks and different school zones and things like that. And I've talked to seniors that are worried about how are they going to get, you know, the roads down to the senior center? And how are businesses going to transport goods? And how are businesses going to stay open if there's construction and that, that sort of thing? I think Mr. Allgood did a great job answering this question, especially since I think infrastructure is one of those things that a lot of people need help understanding, especially the different venues for how it gets paid for. There's a lot of people that think that the taxpayer pays for the majority of that infrastructure, when there's a lot of resources out there, different grants that you can, you know, apply for, different federal programs that you can work towards. And then you can also partner with the county and the legislators, and there's a bunch of different ways where you can get funding for infrastructure. So I think as far as how are we going to plan to pay for it, we're going to utilize the resources and make sure that the burden isn't on the taxpayer. So, thank you.
Mr. McGee.
Thank you. I agree with much of what's been said. One of the, when I went and served in the State Senate, I was able to sit on the Senate Transportation Committee and eventually become the chairman of that committee. One of the issues that I heard over and over from constituents as I went home to the College of Idaho basketball games during the session was, we can't get back and forth from Boise to Caldwell. We, as business owners, as community members, we need to be able to get back and forth. And because of that, I and Governor Kim Thorne and many others created the Garvey Program. And what the Garvey Program did was establish $500 million for Interstate 84 between Boise and Caldwell. We were under much the same circumstances as we, we were back then, where we were one of the fastest growing states in the country. We still are. Caldwell is one of the fastest growing communities in Idaho, and we still are. And so we have to find ways to take care of our infrastructure issues. What Councilman Allgood said is, is correct. The city has traditionally done a very good job of managing their budget and making sure that we're able to do that. But we also have to look at other ways that we're able to pay, that we're going to be able to pay for this infrastructure because we know the growth is coming. Much of that growth has to be paid for by the growth itself. I totally agree. But at the same time, we have to be willing to look out of the box and look at big projects and big ideas in order to keep our, our community and our economy functioning the way it is right now.
Mr. Stark.
Well, get on many of the comments that the mayor, I think the state and federal grants are lost. The biggest problem I have is the lack of the impact fees. When I first took office, I was in the second year, I found out that we had visited the impact fee structure in 2016, but prior to that was eight to 10 years before we even looked at it. And by law, we're supposed to visit that every year. I think we're so far behind in impact fees right now. That's part of our problem because you and I, the taxpayer, are, we're burdened with a lot of those taxes relative to new construction, new construction. You know, a lot of folks think that urban renewal agency fees are, it's free money, but it isn't. Since 1999 up to 2018, $91 million just in Caldwell has been taken out of this tax structure to go for other things as far as urban renewal. Doesn't mean urban renewal is bad. It means that we have to be a lot smarter in spending that money. You know, my taxes have gone up $2,000 a year since we moved into our home 12 years ago, and I'm concerned about senior citizens on fixed incomes. What does that do to us? It did a lot to our budget. I'm still fortunate enough to have a part-time potato consulting business. I can take up a lot of that cost, but a lot of people can. And we do have impact fee structures coming up here hopefully this, early this winter, where we are going to look at the fees and structure being a little bit different. So that will relieve some of us of, of some of those major costs. Because right now, as far as I'm concerned, I think as the contractors and builders and the real estate folks, my goodness, they're making a hell of a lot of profits, and a lot of us taxpayers are paying for that profit. And that needs to, that needs to change.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Trinkle.
I don't do good with reading scripts, so I'm just going to go with this. We need to look at our infrastructure needs to pay for itself. Sustainable growth is the way it's got to be done. So as businesses come in and they put money into the system, they need to be able to put money into that infrastructure. One of the major problems we have right now, taxpayers are paying way too much. They're the ones that are carrying this burden of the burden, or the burden of the growth. Urban renewal, if used correctly, is a magnificent tool. Don't get me wrong. But right now, we're not using it magnificently. We have large areas of agricultural land that get bought up, turned into industry. These industries, they need fire, they need police protection, they need sewer, they need, they need all, everything. Residents that are coming in need schools. They're not paying for that. The resident taxpayer is paying for that. It's time we slow down on these urban renewals, let the ones that need to expire expire, and start paying for the infrastructure that they're used and get the burden off the taxpayers back. Another one is impact fees. Chuck Stadig brought it up from 2006, 2016. They didn't meet. There was no updates on the impact fees. They didn't discuss the impact fees like they're supposed to under law. And it was gross negligence. He quoted in the paper, I believe it was Mr. Horton, if I got the name wrong, I apologize, said it really wasn't a big deal. That's gross negligence on the part of the government, city officials that you elected to watch out and represent you. They're not doing it. It needs to be done. We need to look at these things. We need to look at the impact fees. We need to look at how urban renewal is currently being used and use it to fix the infrastructure, not create brand-new agricultural land and build an infrastructure there. We need to fix the infrastructure we have now and let growth happen magically, sustainably, to where it's not drawing the taxpayers out of the city and forcing them out of their homes.
Thank you. Mr. Wagner.
Thank you. Another great question. So this, in regards to this, we need to be a little bit more proactive, I feel, as a city. Infrastructure is kind of that silent killer. If we're not aware of it, and keep an eye out for it, it will get us. Traffic, roads, sewer, water, if you do not keep up on those things, people are not going to want to live and move to your community. You know, I believe a fresh new approach in this would be great. You know, as far as taking bites at a time, you know, doing a million dollars a year, whatever it may be, the budget to go and pretty improve infrastructure. So we're not doing it all at once. Watching, seeing where the city's growing, where the people are going, where we need to have that infrastructure go. We do it a little bit at a time. We also need to look at how we do it now. Right now, I've seen this firsthand where developers come in. If you were the first one in and you're in an undeveloped area, you get to put the sewer in at your cost. You get to put the water in at your cost in those main streets. And they look across the street at undevelopment and say, well, what about that person? When they come in, they don't have to pay for anything on that. So we need to look at that and see what can we do differently so that it's equitable for both sides of it? And so that the first one there isn't the one that's being punished. They should be the ones. They're the ones setting the precedent, putting themselves out there to help grow those areas that we needed. So we shouldn't be punishing them. So those are things we can look at, you know, different approaches. How do we do that? There's the sewer there, and we have them pay for their half. When the developer on the other side comes in, they pay for their half. So those are different things that we can look at. The experience that I can bring to that to help make sure that we start being equitable. And I think what that does, it just enhances the whole community. Because I've seen it where developers are backed out, and they haven't done it because they were the first ones and they didn't want to be. So they're waiting. And guess what? It's on the other side, it's the chick, which, you know, the chicken or the egg. And so we're just waiting for a lot of that to happen. And so I think we need a new, fresh approach on that. See what can we do to make it equitable for everybody so that, again, the taxpayers aren't paying for it, we're getting those people coming in to help, to help fund those infrastructure improvements.
Thank you. Our next question, which we'll start with Mr. Allgood, is going to be asked by a student here at the College of Idaho. Christopher Troxer is a sophomore. He's a double major in art and political economy. He is also a lifelong resident, his life's not been that long, but lifelong resident of Caldwell. So Christopher?
Yes, excuse me. Question is, what can be done to make the city of Caldwell more attractive to young residents?
I started the last one.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's okay. We'll roll with the punches. It's good.
I have one job.
I think this is a great question. In fact, as I've been talking to college students and with the people of Caldwell, as I've been door knocking in that for this campaign, that's probably the second topic that people are concerned about, like how are we going to keep our young people here? And it's a, it's a great question. They're concerned that we're sending our best and brightest over to Boise or sending them out of state because we're not providing opportunities. And I think one of the things we could do as a city is make sure that we're, you know, partnering, partnering with this Princeton reviewed college that we're sitting at and talking to them about what are the career trends happening for our young people? What are the paths that a lot of the students are on to graduate? What kind of things that we can do as a city to make sure they have opportunities here? We need to make sure that our bright, innovative, potential entrepreneurs are looking to Caldwell as someplace to start their business and to raise their families. Let's see, what else do we have on there? I can tell you, my spouse, she is an alum of College of Idaho, and she works for a firm that is out of state, but she wanted to stay here and raise our son. I personally, I have to commute into Boise three times a week. So we really, this is really a huge area of need. I believe I'm the youngest person on this stage, and if elected, will be the youngest person on the city council. So what I have to say to this is let's make it happen. Let's figure out a way to keep all of you here and so that we can raise our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McGee.
Thanks, Jasper. Christopher, thanks for asking that question. It wasn't too long ago, although probably longer than that.
It was a long time, John.
It was, perhaps. That I was sitting like you, I had gone to Valley High School, I graduated from Valley High School, and I decided to come to attend the College of Idaho. And as I got closer and closer to graduating, I began to ask myself, okay, what am I going to do next? Where am I going to work? What am I going to do? And that's an answer that we need to have better answers for in this community. We don't, just in this audience alone, I see Jerem's kids, I see my kids, I see Evangeline's kids. That's what this election is about, is how do we set that future so when the Waggers and the McGees and the children of this community graduate, hopefully all attend the College of Idaho, but when they graduate, they have the kind of opportunity that allows them to stay in this community. That means continuing to bring businesses in. That means continuing to provide job opportunities where these guys, my daughter and my son, if they choose to stay in Caldwell, they have that opportunity. That is, to me, the single most important reason why I'm running for the Caldwell City Council is to ensure that we have those types of opportunities for our children, for college students for years and years to come.
Thank you.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I can't add too much to what everybody said. The only two complaints I ever had from college students the four years I've been on the city council was entertainment, transportation. I think the plaza has taken care of most of the entertainment problems I think we had in the past. As far as transportation is concerned, you know, our valley transit system is growing just about every year, and I think we can do probably a better job by coordinating with them on exactly what those needs are. If the college folks would like to come by at one of the council meetings and maybe help us address some of those issues, we would appreciate that. But I think that's probably the only thing that I can think of that is lacking right now as far as getting college students downtown. So, thank you.
I think we can arrange to have a couple of college students come down there. The Omos saying he wants to. Mr. Trinkle.
I looked at this question a little bit differently. The young residents, what do we got to do to keep them here? First of all, we need diversified entertainment. If I, I would like to consider myself still a young man. I'm only 38, but I guess I'm a little bit out of touch with things. But going downtown, they need diversified entertainment. They need to have different things that they enjoy doing. Boise is a great example of this. They have tons and tons of different restaurants that offer all sorts of different eating experiences. They have the murder trial dinners. They have live entertainment. There's live music downtown yearly. There are multiple festivals that go along and draw people in there and give people something to look at and go in and do. There's, there's micro brewery tours simply the big thing now where people get to get together. And I saw in Boise, they're riding this giant trolley car by bicycle, like 20 people pedaling this thing to get through and, and visiting the different areas. It makes it fun. It makes it exciting. It's new. And Boise's willing to bring that stuff in, and we need to look at that role model to do the same thing. Because then what that does is that keeps our young people interested in spending their money here and being here and wanting to live here. And then eventually as they get older, they have that loyalty, they have that pride of being here and that fun and those memories. And then they want to work here. And then they can themselves go into entrepreneurship jobs and create different types of businesses, either in the entertainment district or whatever else they find that works and help to improve Caldwell more and more again. So I think the first thing we need to look at and what a lot of these college guys are looking for is downtown's kind of boring from their perspective. But I think it's great, but there's a lot more improvement we can do. Music, comedy clubs, theaters. We can have, I know there's, there's drama students here, could go and use that pavilion that's down there in Indian Plaza and put on plays in the summer. Would be a great way to get people out and experience good times downtown. So the first thing I think it is, is make it more exciting for them. Draw them in. Let them love this city like people love Boise's downtown entertainment nightlife, and then to where they will want to contribute and build it up even more here.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Wagner.
That is a crucial aspect, you know, of a city growing, the, the young residents. You know, we are all going to grow, get older, move on one way or the other. And it's these young kids that we need to retain and bring them. The ones that are here, try to keep them here, the ones that are coming, get them to stay. And I think one of the biggest aspects of that is where we are right now, the College of Idaho. We have students that come from across the country, outside of Idaho, and come here to Caldwell for their education. We need to convince them to stay in Caldwell. These are great kids. They're educated kids. They can have great jobs. So we need to get them interested in Caldwell, realize what it is. We have some great people that came to the College of Idaho that are still here, still here, helping, working at the city and other jobs that they've had. And so we need to continue to enhance that and get the college really involved. And whether that, I love going down to, you know, our show and shop down at the plaza and you see a class of students up on the stage, you know, where professors brought her students down. We need to encourage that and work together, the city of Caldwell, the College of Idaho. I mean, what a great partnership. And we need to continue to do that. We need to be innovative. The way that things are going, the way that things are changing so fast, we have to be innovative. I wanted to talk a little bit about what's sitting in my office right now that just showed up today. I have four electric vehicle charging stations sitting in my office waiting to be installed this next week in downtown Caldwell. That's being innovative. To a lot of us here, we not care about that. But to this growing population, these young students, those are- But to this growing population, these young students, those are big things. That was a grant that we were able to get through Idaho Power that I was able to help to procure, so we can get those installed. And that is an attractive feature. We need to continue to grow those, since I'm excited to get those in, by the way. It's going to be a great thing, we let the cat out of the bag, but that will be in next week. But just different things like that. Tenth Avenue Bridge, the underpass, for those of you that don't know, hopefully it opens soon. There's going to be an underpass center there for bicyclists and for pedestrians, connecting College of Idaho, connecting this wonderful Sioux River District to downtown Caldwell. You don't have to walk across Tenth Avenue, you'll be able to walk underneath it, ride your bike underneath it. Those are different things we can do to help bring more of these kids here and keep them here and get them to the downtown.
Thank you. Mr. Allgood?
Well, this question is far more pertinent than we may realize, very good question. The median age of the population of Caldwell is thirty years old. In most cases, you look around you, they think it was much older, but honestly, the median, the median age in Caldwell is thirty years old and based on the population, that could decrease. So our younger population not only has a lot of interests and needs, but they're growing. And so it's, it's something that should be a forefront in all of our minds. The, I, I, we've talked a lot about entertainment for, for the younger groups, but there's a lot more to it than that. I, my twenty-year-old son sitting here in front row, and he, uh, these kids, when they come out of school, go to college, they get their first jobs, we want them to get their first jobs in Caldwell. We want them to live in Caldwell. We have got to make sure there's housing for, for our younger people. I know when I was a young person, I didn't walk out of school buying my first home. I rented a lot of houses before I was able to buy my first house. So when we decide what we're going to do to keep the youth in our community, there needs to be jobs that pay them an adequate wage and there needs to be places where they can afford to live. Entertainment is probably third on that list, in my opinion. Thank you.
Now for our next question, bit of a bifurcated question here. If you're an incumbent, what accomplishment can you point to that is most beneficial to the people of Caldwell? For the challengers, after four years in office, what accomplishment would you like to point to as being the most beneficial to the people of Caldwell? We'll start with Mr. McGee.
All right, thank you Jasper. Let me, let me answer this a little bit differently because I do have an extensive public service background. One of the things that I am most proud of in, in serving this community is when Chris Allgood and Garrett Nancolis came to the legislature about fifteen years ago and said, John and Patty Anne, we have a gang problem in Caldwell and we need to do something about it. And looking around the room, I recognize a lot of faces of a lot of people who have been here for a long time. And fifteen or twenty years ago, our community was known not for Indian Creek Plaza, not for Sky Ranch, but for much more negative reasons. Much of that had to do with the gang issue. The mayor, Chris Allgood, came to Senator Lodge and I and said, we need to do something about this. Senator Lodge and I worked with the state legislature and we passed legislation that made gang activity illegal. What that did is it gave then Chief Allgood and the Caldwell Police Force the ability to arrest gang members simply because they're in gangs. Not because they were caught doing a crime with a gun, or not because of additional crimes, but simply because they were in gangs. You look around our community, it's the year 2019. Gang problems may not be totally gone, but I think Chris Allgood and Chief Allgood and others would agree that the gang problem in this community is mostly gone. That legislation helped tremendously. Mostly it was because of law enforcement efforts of Chris Allgood, the federal police and the state police. But I am most proud of, as a member of this community and living in this community all my life, that I played a small role in helping to alleviate that problem.
Mr. Stodick?
Thank you. I, I look at this from a different standpoint relative to, you know, how can we as councilmen serve the taxpayers a little bit better than we have in the past? When I first took office again, I, I looked at some of the budgets, let's start with the golf folks first. The city was subsidizing them anywhere from a hundred to two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars a year just to make sure that they could pay their employees and keep the golf course up. I thought that was terrible. So I volunteered for the golf committee and I told them that we need to raise our fees. You, you thought that the roof would have fallen in after I said that, but that's, that was one of the things we needed to do. I thought that the current golf pro at that time had a sweetheart deal as far as receiving a lot of the revenues that should have gone to the cities who made a change here, but now we have a new golf pro. Brent Williams and, and Mr. Gardner at the, at the Fairview Golf Course have done a tremendous job as far as getting things in mind. We did raise some of the fees, we're still the cheapest song in town and we still have, we lost some members, but we're gaining a lot more back even from some of the other golf courses like, like Timberstone. So we're doing, we're, we're making progress there and I, I gave the, the folks on the golf committee a goal that, that we need to break even this next year, at least make a little revenue, so if we can get there. On the issue of YMCA and other subsidies and the TBCC College, you know, we're still paying for a lot of their repair and maintenance at the YMCA because they don't turn anybody away. In some instances, I, I guess that's a good deal, but you know, looking at it from a business standpoint, you know, you've got to charge a fee to keep the billing up and pay the employees, that's the old hard facts. And I think we need to change that system also because you, the taxpayer, are picking up that bill also. As far as TBCC College, again, just my opinion, I don't think the city ought to be in the education business. I think we'll leave that up to CWI and the College of Idaho. We're still paying repair and maintenance fees for that building, the city owns that building. We pay taxes on it, I think we ought to get rid of it and let the educational folks run that and save that money for the taxpayers also. So, did all of the rest of the things that the folks would say, but I think those are some of the improvements that I've made since I've been there for a year cycle. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Mr. Trakel?
I'd like to be able to look back at the end of four years and know that my devotion remains to the residents of Caldwell. Sorry, thank you. I'd like to look back at the end of four years and know that I remain devoted to the people of Caldwell. I want to know that I earned their trust and that I have kept their trust, knowing that I'm going to push for the residents first and that the community will grow and will become much better, the infrastructure will support itself. Businesses will come in because we are growing, because it is getting to be better. A leader needs to understand his people and he needs to look at those people first and know that they are the reason why he makes his decisions. Our city officials need to remember that we're here to serve the community first, not outside interests. We need to know and always in the back of our minds that when we make a decision, we need to know both the beneficial and the negatives that it could affect the community and the people directly. And how hard is that going to hurt them? We need to get out, we need to listen to you speak and tell us what you want to see happen, what needs to happen. And we need to take that in our heart and our consideration when we make our decisions. And on top of that, when a whole community comes against something and sees their officials not listen to them and go against the majority, they lose a lot of trust in the city and the officials. And I'm hearing that now as I knock on doors, as I talk to people, they say, there's no point going to city council. Nothing's going to change, nobody listens, they don't care. They're concerned about the money, they're concerned about businesses coming. And it's time that gets changed, and it's time to turn around and show and remember why we get elected. And that's to represent the people that elected us.
Thank you. Mr. Wagner?
There are so many things that went through my mind in this question. You know, as far as, you know, pointing out in four years from now, what would be the most beneficial? I mean, Sky Ranch, this is a great example, industrial, creating more jobs, increasing the value and net worth of the city of Caldwell. But the, what led me to the answer for this question was the last part, is it most beneficial to the people of Caldwell? And there's so many things, but focusing on the people that are, Caldwell make up Caldwell. And I believe that one of the greatest accomplishments that I could achieve is working together to enhance and continue to grow our downtown. You know, Indian Creek Plaza, making it a true destination for the people of Caldwell. That's going to include increasing the businesses that are down there. You know, filling, not, we don't have a hole, but we have a dirt patch in downtown Caldwell. And that's something that we need to get filled and fixed and something there. So looking back four years from now, I'd love to be able to look at that and see what we, what I've been able to be a part of to help to improve downtown Caldwell, where it's a thriving, thriving community, place to gather year round. Right now, it's great, it's still in its infancy, Indian Creek Plaza in the downtown. The changes at least are in the infancy and it's fun to see it grow. We have, Winter Wonderland is amazing, the number of people that come down and see the lights and that is just fantastic. And the summertime and the splash pad and the movies and things like that are fantastic. But we need to make it a year-round destination, or even in those off months, there's things happening. People want to come and go to restaurants or go to whatever it may be, stop in a soda burke for a drink, whatever it may be. Just come and be there in downtown Caldwell and make that a true year-round environment. That would be one of the greatest accomplishments that I could have in those four years.
Thank you. Mr. Allgood?
Did you say the soda burke's? First of all, yeah, this, this question's really interesting, but I, I just want to say that when, when decisions are made and we do things as a city government, it's not a singular effort. This is all a team effort, this is a community effort. There are a lot of things I'm very proud of, but I certainly take credit for none on my own. But what I bring is long-term value. As, as John said, what, what we do, we're doing for our next generation, for our kids, for our grandkids. And I certainly think the exact same way. With Indian Creek and the Plaza, last year, there's, there's a counter on a bridge, how many people crossed that bridge? Three-hundred-and-thirty thousand people last year crossed that bridge in downtown. Would you have seen that ten years ago? Those are the kind of things, and then those are the kind of things twenty years from now, I want our kids still down at Indian Creek Plaza and walking along the Plaza. The Sky Ranch Business Park, the partnerships with this college, I still want to be going to College of Idaho football games. The Veterans Hall, Councilman Stodick has been instrumental in that and it, what a success that has been. And, and again, those things, great value to our city for a long period of time and that's what's important to me. If I have any kind of legacy, that's what I would be proud of.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. and Ms. Bechler?
Well, I think for me, what I would like to look back on after four years of serving on the city council would be bringing voices to the table that, that have never been heard before to the city of Caldwell. Voices that are important to the prosperity of the community and voices that are currently going unheard. I would like my contributions to create sustainability and prosperity in the community where my son Raleigh wants to stay here and raise his family, go to College of Idaho, not Boise State, College of Idaho, and raise his family. And then we don't have to ask questions about how, how are we going to get our young people to stay here? I want that question to go away, I want young people to be here. And it's, it's not really what I'll, I'm looking back on for myself, but what I, what I'm going to do that's going to be impactful to the city for generations to come. So, thank you.
Now we have our concluding remarks. We start with Mr. Stodick.
Well, you know, when we first started this reelection, I, I first thought it might turn into a popularity contest. I'm not sure that's true anymore, but I hope you taxpayers will look at whether we're incumbents or candidates, is how loyal we are to you, honest, our integrity, our discernment when it comes to decisions. Are we doing the right thing? Are we, are we bringing you a product that you can live with as far as being a homeowner and raising your families here? And, and part of that is belonging to a lot of these committees. As, as Mr. Allgood mentioned, I'm on the Caldwell Veterans Memorial Hall and that's been a great success for the veterans as far as bringing them education, medical health, bringing their families in mind too with any of the services that we, that we provide. It's been a real success for the community. I mentioned to you, I was on the golf committee and they haven't fired me yet, so I think I'm doing some good there. I'm also on the firefighters' contract negotiations committee. We negotiate contracts with, with the union on that committee. I participate in the independent city budget audit committee with Ely Bailey Company, which is an accounting company out of Boise. I sit on the impact fee advisory board, I'm not a member of it, but I attend their meetings to make sure that in my opinion, what they're doing is correct for the taxpayer. I'm on, I'm advising on the concerned citizens of Canyon County and they're the ones that, that actually stopped this Taj Mahal jail bond that came up here this past year. And, and we have a lot of good ideas, I think, that will make this thing work and relieve the jail problems that we have. And I'm also a member of the Board of Trustees on Grace Christian Church, which I attend. And you've heard all the, the incumbents and, and the candidates that are, are looking to serve on the council. I hope that you look to see what, which candidate will serve you the best. I want to remind everybody too, tomorrow night at the police, Caldwell Police Station, the, the community room there, they're going to have another meeting like this one starts at seven o'clock. And you taxpayers are going to be able to ask questions. So I would invite you to attend that meeting, seven o'clock tomorrow night. Thank you.
Mr. Trakel?
Okay, first thing is to remember, our elected officials are here to serve us, you, the community. I have an unfair advantage against all my opponents here. To me, that definition of serve is beyond what I can put into words. I led Marines into Fallujah, I led Marines to Al-Anbar Pramist in Afghanistan, Iraq. Made, made decisions. The devotion, the sacrifice that you have to put into this, the things that you have to give up for the greater good, it weighs a lot upon somebody. And what I'm saying is, is that's the devotion that you want for somebody in city council. That is going to put that same devotion and pride to all of you. And as I sit here today and I promise you, I will need this city to the best of my ability with the same devotion and love and compassion that I had for my Marines under my charge and for our country that I served to fight. And now I want to serve our community. So please vote for me on November fifth. And to reiterate, when Mr. Chuck Stodick said, please come tomorrow night, CPD, the, the community hall room and ask your questions that you have in your hands right now directly to us and let us hear what you are concerned about and what is important to you. Thank you.
Mr. Wagner?
Thank you again to all of you for coming here and being a part of this. It's, wish there was more, there was a good crowd here, but I wish there was more, I wish there was more involvement in, you know, city government and in elections and things of that nature. I think we take that for granted a lot. And unfortunately, the numbers of the polls don't reflect, I think, the desire that people have to be a part of their community. So thank you for coming out and being a part of this tonight. In regards to this, to this council election, I truly feel that I am the qualified candidate for this to help lead Caldwell into the future. The experience that I have, the understanding in regards to city government and to city councils and the way that they're governed, you know, understanding taxes and, you know, really truly, how can we increase our tax base? You know, it's not a simple, you know, solution to go in and just slash taxes and cut everybody's wages at the cities and to cut this program, cut that program. The city has incredible employees, you can take me out of that. But the people that are down there are amazing, they do great work. And so they're doing their part. And so we've got to look at what really can we do to increase that? Again, it's increasing our industrial, the other types of businesses that we have, so we can increase our tax base. You know, we're a city similar to the size of Pocatello, their tax, their tax base is nearly double what ours is. So we have to look at those things and see what can we do to increase that and that's going to alleviate that problem. And I think that's also important, remember, this may sound like an odd number, seventeen percent. When you're a member of the city council, you are seventeen percent of a vote, one out of six. There are six members of city council, we have to remember that. We may have the greatest ideas and plans in the world, but if we cannot get at least a few of our fellow, fellow city council members to agree with us, we're not going to be able to change anything. You have to be able to work together, you have to be able to express that and get others to kind of see your viewpoint. to kind of see your viewpoint so that you can get that number to where you need to, to be, to be able to make that difference and make that change. And I truly feel that I can work with those city council members and to be able to move the ideas forward for Caldwell, to continue making it a great place to live and to thrive.
Thank you. Mr. Allgood.
Well, thank you guys for coming tonight. I, I appreciate it. I clean, Mr. Wagner, I wish there was a lot more people here, but the fact that you're interested is very important. There's a saying that goes, the man on the top of the mountain didn't fall there. Caldwell did not get to the level of success that we're seeing today by accident. We didn't get there by poor management and we didn't get there by a lack of commitment. There are lots of people in this community who put in a lot of effort to get us where we are today. If you remember Caldwell fifteen years ago, it was a really bad place. We were, we were struggling. Not only did we not have any money, we had nothing else except crime, we had a lot of that. Today, we're reaping the blessings of a lot of people's hard work. There are people out there that would criticize, complain, point fingers. I encourage you to ask them what they've done. I have proudly served this community for thirty-four years and with your blessing, I will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bechler.
Well, first off, I'd like to thank the College of Idaho for hosting this and the Chamber of Commerce and the Idaho Press for being here and giving us this opportunity to have this important dialogue. Also wanted to give big thanks to the incumbent and my challenger here. I know they've done a lot of hard work for the city and Idaho overall even. I really think Caldwell needs a little bit of a new perspective to help guide us into the future. I think I'm a good person for that job. And if I elected in November on the fifth, I'm Evangeline Bechler. I will do that job for you. Besides that, I look forward to talking to a lot of you. I've been door knocking every day, talking to as many people in Caldwell as I can. I'll be staying here afterwards. If you have any concerns, definitely come talk to me. And I'm going to plug, we're having an open house on Halloween. We found there's going to be hundreds, we found out, trick-or-treaters. So look for the house on the Boulevard with my yard signs everywhere, come by, we're going to have food and stuff. Say hi, meet our little monster of a child, Raleigh. And I look forward to being your next city councilperson if you choose. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. McGee.
Thank you. I, I too would also like to thank everyone who's attended tonight. I've, I've been involved with lots of these candidate forums over the years and frankly, this is probably the best turnout I've ever seen for one. So congratulations to you, to, to the Idaho Press Tribune, to the Caldwell Chamber, to the College of Idaho. Thank you for putting this on as well. Personally, Jasper, I know this is, this is your swan song this year and on behalf of the people in this community, you're not always right, but we appreciate the fact that
But I'm never wrong.
That you're, that you're always, that you're always involved and you're always there. And so we appreciate that. This election on Tuesday is about the future of Caldwell, plain and simple. And it's not about anything else except for what is going to happen in the future for Caldwell. That's why I'm so excited and participate in this conversation tonight. And I also commend the folks that I'm running against. This has been a very good discussion about where we are heading. Those people who know me know one thing about me and that is that I have a passion and a desire to serve this community. Whether it be serving on my church board, whether it be serving on my kid's school board, whether it be coaching soccer or baseball or football or basketball, whether it be a member of Destination Caldwell and helping bring Indian Creek Plaza to town, whether it be being a member of Love Caldwell and the good people who serve the poor in our community and those who need in our community, it has been my honor to serve this community. On next Tuesday, I hope the people of Caldwell will give, will give me the next honor and that is to elect me to the city coun, the city council where I can continue to serve this community. Thanks again for putting on this great form tonight.
Thank you. Remember, you may ask individual candidates questions in the lobby after we conclude. First want you to join with me in thanking these candidates for educating us tonight. I wish that some of the politicians who are on at other levels of government could give us such thoughtful and civil discourses we had tonight. Thank you to Teresa Harden and the Caldwell Chamber of Commerce for helping to organize this event. Want to thank KTVB for streaming this for those who couldn't be here. Want to thank Idaho Press for covering this event and all the other, other events and your candidate guides and such like this. I would be remiss if I didn't thank the College of Idaho, they'd fire me, including our co, co-presidents Doug Brigham and Jim Everett, to Joe Hughes and his communication staff for letting everyone know about this. I want to give a special thanks out and I think you should all thank Adam Garvey, he's hiding up there. Adam can see up there. He's from, he's from our special events at Conference Center and none of this could have happened tonight. We would have no lights, we'd have no microphones or anything if it wasn't for Adam. Lastly, I want to thank you, the audience, both here in the hall and online. You took the time to become informed and knowledgeable, which is a keystone to a functioning democracy. Let me paraphrase Thomas Jefferson. A well-informed citizenry is the heart of a dynamic democracy and the best defense against tyranny. But also remember Oscar Wilde who said, there is no sin except stupidity. May you have a peaceful and blessed evening. Thank you. So Josh, Josh, don't be sinful.